Council meeting ordered, please silence your electronic devices so we can conduct our business and stand for the invocation by council member.
Our Father, Lord of heaven, hallowed be thy name, thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those trespass against us, and lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments? Communications?
The Alzheimer's Association submitted their application for a walk on Saturday, October 1st, 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. This will be starting and ending at Dwyer Stadium. It's the Walk to End Alzheimer's. They will have entertainment, music, rehearsals, and ceremonies.
Any other questions? See, the next one?
And Eli Fish submitted an application for a festival on Saturday, October 15th. This is being held in Jackson Square, 12 to 4:00 p.m. It's a craft beer festival with local breweries, brewery vendors, food, and live music.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a question. Says, "Will electric be needed for the event?" Yes. And then it tells what they'll be providing. Who's providing the electric? I'm just curious if the city's providing it or they're providing it. Because it said there's no cost to the city.
We don't have research for electric. If people use electric outlets that are there, just like in.
I don't recall seeing city electric outlets or that's all.
I don't know about Jackson Square.
Okay.
Anyone else? The next city council business meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 11th, at 7:00 p.m. at the City Hall Council Boardroom, second floor, City Center. Tonight, we have a public hearing to provide information to the public on restored New York grant application. If you can get a motion to open the public hearing. Mr. Beely, second in line, Mr. Byakowski. Call the row, please.
Council member Beely, Posino.
Yes.
Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Richmond.
Yes.
Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Are there any speakers?
There are none signed up.
Does anyone like to speak that maybe didn't sign up and wants to? Okay, motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Byakowski. Second in line, Mr. Beely. Call the row, please.
Council member Byakowski.
Yes.
Jankowski.
Yes.
Beely.
Yes.
Posino.
Yes.
Canaly.
Yes.
McGinnis.
Yes.
Briggs.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Richmond.
Yes.
Audit presentation?
And I'll introduce you guys quickly if you want to go up to the podium.
Are you going to be lowering them?
We are going to be lowering them for two presentations. So while we get that ready. I'd just like to welcome Matt and Erica, Matt Montalvo and Erica Hanley of Drescher and Malecki. They're our audit firm that we selected through an RFP process this year. We had a very, I believe, successful audit, great relationship with staff, and getting all the information to them. Being that it was the first year, there definitely was a lot more transfer of information than had we been working with them for years. But we look forward to working with them again. So they're going to go through the audit. It has been reviewed by the audit committee. The audit committee has prepared a memo and recommendation for your review. It was emailed to you this evening, and you have it in front of you. And then we'll also be going over a recommendation of reserves later in the conference meeting. So thank you very much.
Well, while we're waiting to get the presentation up, Matt Montalvo from Drescher and Malecki and Erica Hanley. We're here to present the results of the audit for the city's year ended March 31st, 2022. We'll go through the audit results with the committee or with the board and then take any questions at the end. So I guess while we're waiting, the first couple of slides, I think we have memorized. So we do a lot of these presentations and a lot. The first thing we like to clarify is what our required communications are with the council. So the first thing we clarify is what our responsibility is in accordance with our standards. And that really is to provide an opinion on the city's financial statement. Management is responsible for the books and records, so we take no responsibility for the preparation of the books and records. So those records are yours. We come in as an independent third party and provide an opinion that they fairly represent the city's financial position. So essentially, they can be relied upon by not only the council in making your decisions, but outside third parties as well. So there we go.
Nice tone.
No, we have some special effects that we worked into the presentation as well. So here's our required communication. We talked about our responsibility. The significant accounting policy and estimates, those are disclosed in the notes to the financial statements. One change in the accounting policy was the reporting of your self-insurance funds. This was management elected to take it from a special revenue governmental fund and report it in more of a more of a way that aligns with general accepted government standards, and that is as an internal service fund. No other real significant changes in the accounting policies. As far as your significant estimates, so these are typically your long-term estimates that you're required by governmental accounting standards to project essentially what is the city's ultimate liability in some of these cases. So the biggest ones being your net pension liability. So that the liability that New York State essentially projects on a statewide level, they allocate a percentage of that to the city and other localities that are involved in the pension plan. You also have a long-term liability related to retiree health insurance benefits that you provide. So it's the acronym is OPEB. You may have heard that in the past, but that's also actuarially determined as well. As far as independence, we are required to be free of conflicts of interest. All of our staff auditors, right up to the partner level. That is a requirement in accordance with our standards. We need to be objective in performing the audit and then ultimately providing that opinion on the financial statements. And then as far as other matters, we didn't have any disagreements with management, no difficulties in performing our audit. We received full cooperation, full open access to the books and records. So we appreciate that. That helped the audit process to go smoothly. You have a very, really, really good city, a lot of, a lot of good departments, department heads, staff. Everybody was very cooperative. So we were impressed on our end as far as the audit process.
Erica, you want to share any other observations related to that?
No, just thank you for your help, Lisa, with the audit and all of Lisa's team. As Matt said, we had full cooperation from everyone that was involved, and we are involved with several departments. We make inquiries, so it's not just the finance that we're looking into, but we're making inquiries of other departments as well.
All right, so why don't we get into the financial trends? Any questions on the required communications before I move on? Okay. All right, so financial trends. The general fund is really where we're going to focus for the most part. This is a five-year trend of your fund balance. You can see you did have an increase from 2021 to 2122 of about $1.3 million. Your fund balance went from about eight hundred, eight, sorry, $8 million in 20, end of 2021 to $9.4 million at the end of 2022. You did have, and we've been seeing these trends across the state. Your sales tax did come in a little bit higher than anticipated. We saw a little bit of the economic recovery after the COVID years. So that bump is pretty consistent with the trends we're seeing statewide. You also were able to have some budgetary savings within your public safety and transportation areas. Some budgetary savings as well. So that was the main reasons for the increase. Your total fund balance being that $9.4 million, but we break it into categories of restrictions. So based on the proposed drafts out there and the memo to management, these are where the fund balance lie. The restricted portion, about $5.4 million, that's the red portion. Those are restricted for particular purposes. So those aren't necessarily available funds for the general operations. Those typically get set aside for capital projects, are the biggest ones, other specific purposes. The green portion is your assigned and committed. So the biggest areas here are the amount you appropriate in your current budget, as well as encumbrances, which is essentially a carryover from past commitments into your current budget. And then when you look at the blue portion, this is the unassigned or truly available portion. So just over $3.1 million. You can see an increase over the last four years. On the next slide, we further look at this. So when you talk about unassigned fund balance, that's the $3.12 million fund balance. We look at it as a percentage of your next year's appropriation, or essentially your current budget. And the reason that's important is because it puts it into context essentially how much how much fund balance or in the, for the most part, liquid assets should you have to be able to sustain your operations? So the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, they recommend as a best practice to have a minimum of two months of your operating expenses, so about 16.67%. Where you are at the end of March 31st, 2022, is right at 17.5%. And you can see it in comparison to your last four years, your last three years there. But that represents that $3.2 million, $3.12 million, about 17.5% of your current budget or your next year's appropriations. So certainly in a stable condition, when you look at liquidity, to be able to handle those challenges going forward. But you're right in line with where the best practices are. So that's the general fund. The other part we wanted to highlight was your business-type activities or your enterprise funds. So the big, the big thing with the enterprise funds is they're set up and they're meant to be self-sustaining. So they really are kind of separate from the taxing authority and more based on charges for services. So when you look at your sewer fund, your water fund, the city center to some extent. But they're really reliant on those charges for a particular service to sustain and cover that operation. So you're not subsidizing it from the taxpayers, the general fund. So these funds are required to be maintained on the full accrual basis of accounting. So it brings in a lot of the long-term items. So that's where we see these capital assets. Certainly, when you look at sewer and water, there's a lot of infrastructure. So your capital asset balance is like within the sewer fund, almost $19 million. But you also have long-term items, so debt, long-term debt associated with those, or you're projecting out your other post-employment benefit liabilities. So it's difficult to kind of put it into a context of fund balance, like the general fund, when we're looking at how do we budget for these funds, because we have all these long-term items. So we try to eliminate those longer-term items to put it in more of a context of here's our available assets versus our short-term liabilities. So what is our truly our fund, our fund balance versus our net position? So we take these, these long-term items out and we look at, here's your estimated fund balance for those funds. So within the sewer fund, you have just over $13 million current in restricted assets. And then the water fund, about $8.6 million in the city center, just over $200,000. In the context of comparing these to your normal budget expenditures, certainly in a stable position within these funds, there's a lot, as I mentioned earlier with the capital piece, there's a lot of infrastructure that relates to sewer and water particularly. So you want to have a little bit higher fund balance and reserves in those funds than you would have in a typical general fund, just because of that capital nature of those funds. So you're in a stable position. These are self-sustaining funds right now. They're not reliant on any other fund to sustain their operations, and that's the same case with the city center. So when you look at your business-type activities, stable condition as well. Any question on those? So then is, just to kind of conclude our general observations, we talked about the financial trends. The city's in a stable financial position at the end of March 31st, 2022, based on where the audit results are. We did not have any reportable findings, so no material weaknesses or significant deficiencies in internal control. We believe your internal controls were designed and operated effectively where you did not have any of those material items. We do issue a formal management letter with best practices for our governments. I think that what I want to highlight is two pretty substantial challenges that governments are seeing right now. One being related to cybersecurity risks and the risks of being subject to a cyber attack. So a lot of the associations related to government entities, NISEC, the County Association, NICOM, the GFOA, they partnered together and put out a cybersecurity primer back in February of 2022, just to highlight how significant government entities are being targeted in cyber attacks. So they put out a lot of statistics just to educate the, those in charge with governance. So the councils out there, the boards that, you know, maybe not be aware of how prevalent this is in this industry. So we have that in our management letter as just an additional caution to look at cybersecurity risks and almost kind of do a mock, you know, mock scenario where if you were subject to a cyber attack, you know, what processes do you have in place? You know, how prepared are we? Because, you know, really with the, the statistics are pretty staggering that this is, it's not a matter of if it's going to happen. It's a matter of when. So being as prepared as possible is where we would recommend. And then there's also a lot of new funding we've seen over the last couple of years related to governments, a lot through the stimulus plans out there, so the American Rescue Plan, the CARES Act. A lot of new opportunities, but with that comes a lot of challenges in not only understanding the compliance requirements for these funds, but also tracking and monitoring the spending. So, you know, that's something also in our management letters, just looking at how you're, you're set up to do that. You know, whether you have a grant administration function or, you know, the ability to monitor those new funding as well as the current funding going on. So those are really the biggest areas going on, but like I said, no reportable findings related to internal controls or concerns as it relates to the city. So those are our audit results. I'll certainly take any questions or follow-up from the group. We're in our final form as far as draft statements. So if everything goes through as far as, you know, the approvals of the fund balances, we can finalize later this week with those last pieces of information for management. Any questions, concerns? Well, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you, Eric.
Do you know we have one more presentation?
We have one more presentation.
Not so president, council members. Just a quick little history before our next presentation. City manager, director of the BDC, myself, members of the town, and the GCEDC have been meeting for a couple of months in regards to the intermunicipal agreement for what we're calling the Batavia Home Fund. Mark Massey is here tonight from the GCEDC to present to you on this in a little bit more detail. But basically, you know that we're in the process of looking into a housing revitalization, improving our neighborhoods in the city. It's a big task of ours as we go forward. We've actually informed a working group from members of the BDC to start looking into this and come up with a comprehensive housing initiative, and this is going to help us through that process. So tonight, we have, as I mentioned, Mark Massey from GCEDC, we have Dan Underhill and Chad Zanfino representing the town. We also had Corsoaz from GCEDC and Jim Krenzick as well, all been instrumental in this process. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark for the chair.
Good evening, everybody. I do have a hard copies, if anybody would like to have hard copies. I got more here, if you need them, so.
Sure. I didn't get one here. Let's get it. That's the two.
Well, good evening, everybody. As Erica said, my name is Mark Massey. I'm the senior vice president of operations at the Genesee County Economic Development Center. We have been diligently working with the town and city representatives on putting together what we've affectionately called the Batavia Home Fund in an effort to help facilitate the remediation, rehabilitation, redevelopment of Marbury Housing and single-family homes within the city of Batavia. So a lot of the recent economic development trends have been happening. There's been a huge, you know, economic growth in and of itself drives the demand for housing. And it also, housing growth enables economic growth. So it's a bit of a give and take and a back and forth, and you kind of hope that one can kind of keep up with the other and both kind of push each other up as you go along. Genesee County's private sector employment has increased 4.4% between 2015 and 2020, and the Batavia-based food and beverage manufacturer is now employing more than 900-plus people, both at the Egg Park and around the Egg Park. You know, attracting residential growth is a major decision factor for site selection and business investment. We see it all the time when we have companies coming to town. They want to see what kind of housing is here and how affordable is it compared to what they see not only in other parts of the country, but, you know, they have in their mind the wages they want to pay, and they want to make sure that their employees can have good, stable housing here and be able to have a good life here. And we had a Rockefeller Institute of Government, the SUNY Think Tank, did a study back in 2020 in that a lack of available housing can actually prevent the full local rate of return on your business investment. Obviously, if you have people who aren't living here yet earning here, they're not spending their money here. And that's, that's something that we want to make sure we can capture here and continue going into the future. And one of the other things that has been prevalent is the use of what are called host agreements going forward. So projects can make payments that can help cover municipal infrastructure and other associated public uses going forward. So the recent housing trends, all of these are obviously pre-COVID. I don't think we have any kind of data off of the COVID, and we probably skew some stuff at this point. But there's about 36.4 homes per year built in Genesee County from 2015 to 2021. About 34% of those home builds were in the town of Batavia. So we did have, Genesee County did a housing needs and market analysis back in 2018. That 50% of the housing stock is 50-plus years old. One of the great parts about living here is we don't get a lot of natural disasters. We don't have a lot of issues. But that also means that a lot of our structures have been here for a very, very long time and need to be renovated, rehabilitated, and brought up. So that study states that in the mid-range growth scenario, there's a need for over 4,800-plus units over the next 20 years, and 1,500 of those being new single-family units. As you can see that, you know, we're on a growth trajectory right now. It's something we really want to continue, obviously with stamp. And to be able to do that, there's got to be an availability of new market units out there. And that grants and tax incentives are needed to be provided to promote new construction and rehabilitation, because the return on investment to build new or rehabilitate right now is lower negative. You know, the market estimates are about $300,000 build costs for a 2,000-square-foot home. Obviously, COVID has had a significant effect and impact on the materials and supplies in that industry. And on the home sales data, there were 243 homes sold in the city of Batavia in 2021 with 134,000 average sale price and a 1918 average build date of the homes that were sold. As you can see, it's great to live in a place that's stable, but the age will catch up with you in a hurry. So one of the things that we wanted to do was to help to create this Batavia Home Fund. So using these host benefit agreements on new housing projects in the city and town of Batavia to try and advance the key goals and uses of the Batavia Home Fund. The key goals being the creation of new housing stock within the city of Batavia, rehabilitating vacant and blighted buildings and residential properties, and converting rental properties to single-family homes within the city, as well as a long-term increase to property values and property tax base. And some of the key uses of the funds, so we have an overview of the funds. We haven't gone through the application process yet and limits and caps and things, because we're not that far into the process. We want to make sure everybody's on board before we go too far down that path. But the key uses would be the demolition, rehabilitation of residential structures and disrepair that cause community and neighborhood blight. Provide incentives for the conversion of rental properties to single-family homes. Help to cover some of the extraordinary development costs that are related to hazardous material abatement, remediation, and flood hazard areas, as well as modernization of some of the infrastructure improvements and possible extension to building lots. A lot of the costs associated with housing developments that make it somewhat cost prohibitive is the extension of necessary infrastructure, roads, water, sewer, to get to those building lots to enable them to be able to be built and sold off for single-family homes, as well as potential for land assembly, property acquisition, and due diligence. Bless you.
Bless you.
So the funding and use strategy, so there would be a project, a housing project in the town or the city that would contribute to host funds as well as pay into a pilot. It would be about an 80/20 split. The GCDC, GGLDC, in the agreement would have the opportunity to make contributions as well as the municipalities would. The Batavia Home Fund, then, the dispersment process, there would be a project owner, would be an application from an eligible project owner, could be a municipality or a developer or property owner, was submitted to a review committee. That review committee is made up of one member of the town, one member of the city, and then one member from the GCDC. And then the committee would approve the overall use of those funds for those projects. So just as an example, if there was a project that could contribute. So if somebody were to build a rental unit complex, that would be about a $12 million capital investment for about 50,000 square feet. There would be a 20-year host and pilot agreement with that, with 80% going to the host, 20% to the pilot. So that would be about $29,000 a year into the host fund, which over 20 years would be $571,000. So obviously, we've, we've taken a look at, you know, if you're looking at demo costs, we've done some bids in the past for some houses for demolition. $29,000 would probably get you, depending on the condition of the house, possibly a house demo, possibly as well as two or three potential incentives for conversion of rentals to single-family homes as well. So I think there's a lot of opportunity there, and there's a lot of potential to be able to really effective make some change. Obviously, these are some of the keys that the city had provided to us as far as what their housing initiative would be. Obviously, their comprehensive plan lists housing as a strategic priority, stating the 2010 CCB Community Improvement Report, the 2015 Batavia Opportunity Area Strategic Redevelopment Sites, and the DRI Investment Strategy. Looking for a way to try and devote resources to address neighborhood and housing issues at which this fund could really help to effectuate a lot of those. You know, from development, the Strategic Housing Initiative, as Erica mentioned, the BDC put together a work group for housing, code zoning reform enforcement, and then housing renewal. And then the Batavia Home Fund will help that Strategic Housing Initiative for a lot of different opportunities. They would be able to fund some of those. So the town of Batavia, there's a couple of members here tonight. We did present to them a couple of weeks ago, and leave it on their agenda for their meeting this Wednesday for consideration. The benefits to the town, obviously, by encouraging and supporting housing within the city, there won't be an increase in town public service costs associated with residential development, especially where the development is not concentrated. So obviously, if they have. So obviously, if they have houses that are sparsely put out far away, it does make more, it does increase the town services to them at a rate that can't quite be covered by the property taxes that are coming in for those. And again, it helps a lot eliminate the cost of infrastructure to support residential housing, roads, water, sewer, drainage. A lot of those are long runs to get to one house. So I think that the town views this as a way to help reduce some of their operational costs and public costs as it relates to housing that kind of gets spread out. It also allows them to have more developed land for commercial industrial development. Obviously, we've had great success with our corporate parks located within the town of Batavia. They are probably anywhere between 70% to 80% full at this point, so we are actively looking at other park or other properties within the city, within the town for development of another corporate business park. It helps preserve agricultural land by eliminating sprawl for residential housing and maintaining it within the city. And then maintaining, obviously, a vibrant, strong residential housing stock within the city not only helps eliminate blight, curse, and more sustainable residential development, but it really is, I mean, the city is in the center of the county, and what happens in the center can radiate out. So I think we all feel like, you know, this is the center of the county, and if we can make a change here, we can make the change that can radiate out throughout the entire county. And that was it pretty quickly. I don't know if there's any other questions or anything else anybody would like to ask? Yes?
I hope I don't sound naive. I'm looking at the words comprehensive housing needs in the city. Where in the city? Is there land for all this?
So I think that's something that we would work with the city on. I think that's why they formed the B D C Housing Committee. There have been developers that have looked at plots within the city for potential housing developments, and I think as far as the use of the home for anything that would be considered blight or maybe zombie houses or things like that, I think we would rely on the city to identify those, to be able to bring those forward for potential remediation or demolition or things like that.
And just two sites I can point out in our BOA. The Harvester has plenty of opportunity for potential housing. It might not be single-family housing, but it would be multi-family housing or apartment, market-rate apartments, as does Creek Park, which is also on your agenda tonight. Creek Park is the location behind the fire station, which is a parcel of land that's been identified for housing. So it's not just single-family housing we're thinking of. We're also thinking of more market-rate apartment complexes, which a lot of baby boomers and millennials are interested in living in, so they don't have to mow their lawn or shovel their snow. So you've got to think about existing houses, single-family houses, and then multi-unit residential-type houses all into one big strategy.
And I'm thinking more of single-family homes.
Right. There are some plots of land we've identified. Some of them have environmental challenges in terms of wetlands. Some of them have challenges on whether the owners are ready to sell those lands to developers, but it is certainly something we're looking at and trying to create strategies around.
And those market-rate apartment projects would be the ones that would help to contribute to this fund. So those are important to be able to do as well.
Mark, I have two questions. One, have you identified roughly how many homes should be converted back to single-family?
We've not gotten that far yet, and again, I think that's where we would rely on the city to be able to provide that kind of data.
That's data that we're currently in the process of putting together as part of the comprehensive housing strategy.
Of course, the other thing is anytime you say two-family home, you convert it back to single-family, that's one living area off the records, and that increases more demand. So it's kind of a double-edged sword. You take something off of a rental property, for example, and I, you know, a lot of seniors like to move into the city and rent a place so they don't even have to worry about taking care of it, but if you convert it to single-family, then that's creates a bit larger demand. But I see where you're going.
And again, I think, you know, similar to the Pathway to Prosperity Fund, that the E D C's role in this is to basically be a trustee for the funds. The funds will come in, we'll hold them. Decisions really get made by the committee and by the applications, and they'd all be within the city. So we would rely on the city's guidance as far as, you know, recommendations would go for those projects, because they're going to, you know, identify those areas that they wish to see improvements made.
Anyone else?
I just wanted to say that part of this, to me, is very important, and I think probably to the council as well, because for years, Mark, we have been wrestling with the old housing stock in the city that has been converted to multifamily dwellings. And back in the Jason Molino days, we had discussion with Jason as to, you know, what strategy might we take down the road to incentivize conversions of these back to single-family homes? And so that's, that part of this program really excites me, because that could really help us out with that situation that we have wrestled with, I think, for a number of years and will continue to wrestle with, so.
Yeah, and we've had some discussions about some potential follow-on programs that hopefully we'll be able to bring forward to that can help drive that as well. I think that, you know, I think we can put together a pretty good combination of things here that can help really make to facilitate some change.
I think there's definitely a contingency of young people that still like the idea of a very old home, but it needs to be updated and modernized as well, so.
I think, Mark, and I hope you look into this, but there are a lot of large homes in the city, you know, Victorian mansions and all that, that obviously are no longer economical for a single-family home. So some of them need to be upgraded and stay multifamily, obviously. I mean, I look at some of their four families, and they're still huge, but unfortunately, because of out-of-town landlords, they've been allowed to be neglected and fallen into disrepair, and that's part of the problem right here.
Mark, what kind of timetable are we talking? What happens next?
So I think it would be up to both the city and the town to undertake the agreement for consideration of approval. Once it is approved, then I think we would start to move forward. We do have a potential project that could be a contributor to this fund immediately, by the end of the year potentially, if some things come through. So I think, you know, we would be hoping that both the town and the city would approve, and then we would move forward from there and then start to implement this and work on the details of what an application would look like, what the monies would actually be used for, if there were caps on those types of programs, and then look to ways to try and start to fund it and start to move forward.
So we think it's like end of this year, beginning of next year, spring, something like that?
End of this year, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else?
Will there be any costs involved for the city?
I don't believe so. I mean, staff time probably would be involved, but beyond that, if the city wished to make contributions into it, that's up to legal counsel to determine, but there would be no costs associated with it that we can foresee at this point in time.
Any consideration made to the houses that don't have driveways or parking?
Say that again?
Any consideration to those properties that don't have parking?
So again, I think a lot of these are going to be on a case-by-case basis as far as what the application would be for and what it would be. And again, it would come down to needs identified by the city, either through studies or through others, and, you know, we would have to take a look at all of those at a case-by-case basis to see.
All right, thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Any other presentations?
Yes, four more. Now. Thank you, guys. Bye, Chad. Bye, Dan.
Thanks, guys.
I was going to put one in my phone. You keep that one. Yeah, I got one in my email. I just got it.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the home funding agreement. And you've heard the presentation. Is there anything you want to add to that, Rachel?
Just in front of you, you have a memo that details a little bit more, most of which was talked either by Mark or through the questions you folks have asked, but it is, the terms of the agreement will cover a 10-year period from the time the agreement is signed by all parties. We just recommend that city council consider approving.
To move it to business.
This would go to a future business meeting, right? So any questions or concerns on this?
I have a question. Do you want single homes? People that have like an apartment complex that have multi-appartments, and you want to convert them back to a single home?
Not large apartment complexes. So if you have a multifamily with two or three family, that could be one opportunity for a conversion back to a single family, especially in particular neighborhoods where we might be having issues with multifamily residences. When we're talking about a 20-unit, that we're not looking to convert back, maybe.
I understand that, but if there's just like two apartments in the house?
Yep.
That's in a bad neighborhood, would like to get it back?
Right. Could we start by converting that back? Could we start by demolishing one or nine evans, for example? That's right now had a fire there, and it's really stuck in the process, kind of strategically looking at very specific areas of the city and planning what we can do to bring back certain neighborhoods. So yeah, the answer is yes and maybe.
That would be part of the comprehensive plan. There's actually a program out of Rochester, they call it the Choice Program, that that's specifically what it does, is it provides pilots and other opportunities to contractors to make that conversion.
So two things to start with this clearly. Basically, we're going to incentivize the conversion, so unless we have control over it, then we make that decision ourselves. The incentive's out there. Someone wants to do it, they can, based on the incentives we offer. I don't think we're going to be, they don't have to do it. So we're not going to like pick and choose. I mean, if we have like the fire incidents where it's, you know, interiors or whatever's happening there, and they're not paying taxes and whatever, this gives us a chance to use this fund to help mitigate that. Secondly, there was something else in the background that Jason had started, where there was agreements between the school board, the county, and the town, and whatever, in reference to tax abatements towards incentives towards zombie homes.
Yes.
So that's a project that's in the waiting. I know there's some flaws with that. We talked about that. So I don't know, that would have to be cleaned up, I would assume. If that's not going to work, and we got that already down there, we got these agreements in place, I would think that if we go in this direction, that might want to be shelved or cleaned up somehow or rolled into this, whatever, it would work. I mean, that's out there, and it's something you should be aware of, and I don't know, I don't remember all the details, but I know it was something in the works, and things changed, and Jason left, and he didn't get a chance to get it over the.
You referred to the 485R, which is in the memo. It's something that we have taken into consideration, will continue to, if we go through the comprehensive plan. But our goal was to be able to hopefully package a lot of that stuff together to make it even more.
User-friendly.
Yeah, basically. Because now it's kind of murky, and it's just hard to.
Yeah, and there was some parts that were just impossible to complete. So at least that's there, and some agreements are in place, so, I mean, it's something to build off of or clean up, and then we'll go in this direction if that's what council chooses, but I just wanted to remind you out there on that. And again, these are all based, they're opportunities that you're creating, and people with homes can apply to get those opportunities. And if the city has homes that we're stuck with, we can apply, just like a person can for that home, to get that opportunity to clean it up through this fund. That's the way I understand it, right?
Correct.
Okay, so nobody's being forced to do anything. There're just going to be incentives and opportunities for homeowners, whoever they may be, to get some help to clean some abandoned properties up.
I think one of the bigger, big issues is in the so-called zombie homes, establishing ownership and taking possession of them. And I'm thinking back, just a couple of years ago, we had one home, it was over 10 years to establish any ownership, and we couldn't find out who even owned it. Oh, that mortgage was sold, that mortgage was sold. Who'd you sell it to? ABC Banking and Mortgage Company that's no longer in existence? And that's what really drags down a neighborhood.
I mean, somebody's got to be paying the taxes.
They don't pay taxes.
They don't.
Well, then, three years after the lack of taxes, we can.
You have, you have to find who owns it to take possession. You can't just go and say, okay, we're taking this house. And that, it was a huge problem, I know.
Is that true? I mean, if we can't find the owner, we're stuck in like 10 years?
In rem tax search for current owners and current interested parties. I'm not, I'm not familiar with a situation where we have not found either a title owner or the interested mortgage holders on the properties to be notified pursuant to the real property tax law for foreclosure purposes.
I mean, with technology today, there should be some record somewhere of who owns what house, where.
Well, it doesn't matter what's on file with the clerk's office. The mortgages are on file, the notes are on file, ultimately, the deeds are on file. That's, again, why we run the tax searches or in rem searches before we proceed with the.
So whoever's last on file, that's as far as we know, who owns the house, and we can start that proceeding based on that.
Right. Yeah, I'm not familiar with an instance where we could not find through that in rem search a current owner or interested parties to notify.
So how long should it take, George? How long should it take then? When you have a problem like this, how long does it take to?
Well, it takes back taxes being subject to foreclosure. It takes putting those years in foreclosure through the clerk's office notices, takes running the in-rem searches to identify who needs to be notified pursuant to the foreclosure petitions and filings, and then it takes ultimately a notice of date, deadline for redemption. If those taxes are paid, then those properties are redeemed. I mean, there are instances in which, yes, properties are going through mortgage foreclosure, but they're also properties that have taxes paid. So while technically there may not be a property owner there or an occupant there, the taxes could very easily be current while they sort through the mortgage foreclosure. And that doesn't get.
And that's as they left, they're kind of in dilapidated condition and not being maintained, and that's.
Well, yeah, I mean, some are, and that's a, that's a problem that exists throughout many municipalities across the country, but there are also many instances in the code cases where through the code enforcement office and the code proceedings, we've been able to identify the banks and the mortgage holders to get them online to do work. So it's not completely one way or the other. There are opportunities there as well through both code enforcement dockets and through the in-rem process to get the taxes paid and get action on the property.
Now, if I remember correctly, there was a time when we enlarged or increased the penalties for these type of banks that weren't responding to our calls for cleaning up the properties, and I think then, once they got notice of potential fine, they were immediately showing up and helping out. So that, that system is still in place, I think, through code enforcement and the court systems and assessing fines for lack of them not responding and doing things like that?
Well, you're talking about grass weeds and debris. That's a code section that was added to the city code. That's been enforced, but we are looking at the fee schedule for those and the penalty schedule for that, if court is not conducted by the property owners or responsible entities. But there's a whole plethora of code enforcement mechanisms by which there are civil fines and so forth that exist pursuant to those sections of the New York State Property Maintenance Code. The city doesn't create those fines themselves, and we basically have the opportunity to pursue code enforcement pursuant to New York State Building Code and the city's Property Maintenance Code and take those through a conclusion.
I recall, George, where we were doing things like mowing lawns and then billing the people for the cost, and that got a lot of attention right away.
And we still do. Correct.
So now that COVID is over, courts are hearing code cases again, just to reassure the public, because I've received a lot of complaints about properties and garbage and stuff, we are, just the council agreed that we are now focusing on neighborhood and code enforcement, and now we have the time to do that. So this is all part of that, and that will also continue in conjunction with this fund. So we're going to try a multi-faceted approach to start cleaning up some of these properties and resolving some of these complaints.
Yeah, as we indicated during the COVID time period, which I guess spans a year and a half, two years, depending on how we count it, the court system basically put hold on proceedings for foreclosures, whether it was tax foreclosures or mortgage foreclosures. And ultimately, they also extended that to the code enforcement dockets, so we could not actually access the court systems for that same time period that was a stay on the mortgage foreclosures and tax foreclosures. That expired in the last several months. We've been back in court doing as much enforcement as necessary, with the idea being ultimately, we want compliance. We don't want fines, we don't want penalties, we want compliance. But there's a life cycle to that as well, which is getting challenging properties before the court, having a process by which the owners are identified with the work they need to do, and giving them an opportunity to do that, or repercussions of a trial and findings and potential penalties that has an outcome of that trial. And unfortunately, because of COVID and because of all the stays that were in place from Albany and the federal government, we weren't able to access the court systems for about a year.
Right, because they were, they basically were just taking serious cases at that point.
Yeah, they weren't taking the code cases. They weren't taking the.
So they're behind, and then now we're catching up. So I'm glad to see that we're putting the. So I'm glad to see that we're putting the effort in the neighborhoods and we're getting, getting code reinforced and get that stuff cleaned up. So it's going to take a while, but I mean, we're starting, so that's good. Anyone else? So are we in consensus to move this to a future business meeting?
Yes.
Funding reserves.
Thank you, Council President. As you heard, the audit went well this year. We had moved audit firms to Drescher and Malachi. We reviewed the potential for funding reserves, which we do when we have fund balance. And I'd just like to remind the council that over the past decade, you've diligently built these reserve funds. So when we have emergencies or need vehicle equipment purchases, we don't have to rely as much on the general fund in raising tax rates. We think of reserves as our savings accounts. So I have recommendations to fund reserves at multiple levels for multiple items. I can go through them or entertain any questions at this point.
I have one question.
Sure.
The DPW equipment reserve, you talk about six sedans and four, four by four pickup trucks. Are these like, I mean, are those city vehicles? Are those like, like the city manager's vehicle, take home cars, things like that, or are they all for DPW?
So the ERP outlines are placing, let me just read through this, two single axle dump trucks with plows, six sedans. So sedans are used by code enforcement officials, they're used by Director of Public Works, they're used by superintendents of the Bureau of Maintenance and the water and wastewater. So those would be those types of sedans related to DPW.
Four by fours are the same as...
W, four by fours are typically used in, correct me if I'm wrong, at the water plant, the wastewater plant and for other types of parks. If they don't need a heavy duty truck, they go out with the four by four.
I didn't realize we had that many, I was curious. I mean, I'm not intimately, not one of all equipment at DPW, but I just was curious as to what they were used for.
We do try very hard to maintain a vehicle replacement plan and we do try to buy our vehicles outright and not to enter into a lease program. This way, we're able to use our reserve funds with a lease program that would hit the general fund and it might be more difficult to keep below the 2% tax rate. We do, if they're worth anything, or we give them to the next person in line. So there's a lot of detective vehicles that get shifted around to and from that department. So we try to use the vehicles as long as we possibly can.
Okay, anyone else? So are we in consensus to move that to the business meeting? Everything we're talking about except for the final at the end are going to future business meeting, they're not going to the special tonight, okay? Centennial Fund, commit to wingding?
Yes, Council President, a couple of things we had in front of you, a memo in regards to moving some funds from what was the Centennial Committee to what we're calling the, lack of a term, Wingding Celebration Committee. So if you recall, 2015 was the Centennial for the, for the city. When all was said and done with that celebration, there's $9,188 balance sitting in the conference for that. We would request that that money is transferred from the other restricted fund balance, Centennial Celebration, to other restricted fund balance for a wingding weekend. We are in the process of putting that in a committee. We did get approval from as many of the original committee members for the Centennial to move that money. And those that did respond responded unanimously in favor of that. And some of those folks have actually agreed to help us with the wingding. So early planning stages for that, but this money, we'll definitely see that project forward.
Any questions on that?
I have a question and I have something that's going to make you all angry. Well, I think that the wingding is fabulous and it's for everybody in the city, which I think is great because I love to have parties for everybody in the city. Up until a couple of years ago, we also funded part of the money for the picnic in the park, which is also for everybody in the city. We managed to come up with $9,000 for wingding. We couldn't come up with half that amount to help have the picnic in the park. So, well, I will vote yes on it and I think it's a wonderful idea to have wingding. I will expect some support when Go Art comes back and asks for some money on the picnic in the park, which they had to cancel because of the money we pulled out. Thank you, that's all I have to say.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. Number one, I feel very uncomfortable calling committees that are no longer in session, no longer active and polling the members for an opinion of what to do with something. That's our job. The other thing, I'm not real happy about just saying, let's form a committee and let them go figure out how to spend nearly $10,000. And just as a point of information, the county is not sponsoring the airshow. The county has no involvement with the airshow. There's been a separate LLC formed and the airshow will be run by the private sector, not Genesee County. So I'd like to just point that out to you.
Anyone else? So I guess the question is, are we even going to have a wingding? If we don't, if we don't transfer this money, will there even be a wingding? Is something we're supporting or has it been doing it or how is this issue?
So the funding from the Centennial was identified during the audit process. And we realized if we were ever going to be able to utilize those funds, we'd need to put it towards a citywide celebration run by the city and controlled by the city. So we thought, what better opportunity than to bring back wingding in coordination with the airshow and run it with the city? Just so you're all clear, there was a Centennial Committee, I'll use the word very loosely, that was formed here at City Hall with multiple volunteers and multiple corporate donations. That's what this $9,000 is, is corporate donations to support that effort for Centennial. So it was our thought that if wingding were to happen, that it was probably a little larger than what the bid could take on and handle and probably needed to be done at a larger level similar to the Centennial Celebration.
Was the net funding also left in the fund for the next Centennial Celebration?
Originally it was, but we asked the honorary chairman, Paul Bataglia, and the working chairwoman, Chrissia Major, and other members if they felt they'd like to keep it for that and they thought that a cup of coffee at the next Centennial would be about $9,000 and maybe we should try to use that funding now. So again, this is something Eric and I discussed and came up with. If you're not comfortable moving forward with these funds, we totally understand and...
I'd just like to say, why wouldn't we? We have $9,000 that's left over. Like you say, let's put it to use today and bring back something that the citizens loved and, and a lot of citizens would like to see come back. If we are fortunate enough to get the airshow, why would we not piggyback on that again and have a big festival downtown? It just, and, and just to clear up the air about going to the former committee members, and I'll use that loosely as well, why would we not have done that? These are people that contributed to that fund. Out of respect for them, you would want at least to notify them and ask them, would it be reasonable to, to use those funds? I mean, that's only common courtesy to the people that were involved with those funds originally. So I just don't, I see so much excitement coming from the public right now with just the thought of having a wingding and an airshow. Why would we not?
And the other thing is, I would hope this thing would be sustainable. We wouldn't spend 10 grand on the one and now we're on the hook for 10 grand every year. I would hope if we could get a couple of wingdings out of this and make it last. But you know, remember, we will be on the hook for future, it's not just one wingding, it's like many in the future. So we have to consider that part of it too. But I also agree with you, if it's money that's earmarked for a celebration and it's going to be 100 years from now, I suggest we let the people that contributed to it, through the corporations, let them enjoy it now and go from there. That is my thought.
And we can, we can also treat this contribution much like we treat the VLT money. We don't commit that money to anything. So we, you know, we'll do it this year because we have those extra funds and, and maybe, maybe down the road, hopefully there'll be more of this going on every year. You know, maybe there's, there's other monies that we can tap into that aren't being utilized as well. If not, then we won't be able to contribute that at that point.
Or bid or someone else can take it over and, and I mean, it's worth a shot.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a good idea.
And it gives the bid a chance to, to maybe get some corporate sponsors as well for the, for future ones as well.
And it'll be, and it'll be downtown, so it brings everyone downtown.
Exactly.
I think you should have one condition, Bob's got to be the dump tape.
I, I...
Mr. Chairman, if Councilmember Bailey has any comments, have him address them to the chair and not to me.
Bob, it was late, I didn't get it.
That's all right, I'll get you, Paul. But in any event, I myself, I'd like to see some controls. I agree with Councilperson Pacino, maybe some of this money could be used for the picnic in the park, the 4th of July celebration, which...
One thing at a time.
Well, the money's there and to say, you know, you form a committee and say, well, we have $9,000. Again, if that committee does its job, it figures out a way to spend $9,000 and that may not be necessary.
We'll let them.
As long as they understand that we're not saying that from now on, we'll be putting $10,000 a year into this, I have no problem with it.
Yeah, this is...
It'll be 20 next year.
Yeah, I know.
Councilmember Pacino's point on picnic in the park. When we go to work on the budget in the upcoming months, we will look to try to put that funding back in during the budget process.
Thank you.
Then as council discusses the budget, we can decide whether it stays or not. But this is not intended to be used in the budget process. This is a one-time seeding of...
I understand that.
Okay, I just want to make sure everyone's aware that...
It was my chance to say something I've waited four years to say. Yes, it has.
Anyone else on this? So are we in consensus to move the Centennial Fund for wingding transfer to the next business meeting?
Creek Park.
Thank you, Council President. For many decades, the city has contemplated the redevelopment of Creek Park, the area we discussed earlier, behind the fire station and ice rink. It was identified in the Brownfield Opportunity Area Study that was completed by the city, which laid out a strategic framework to assist the city in redeveloping this underutilized and currently vacant land. We've had, even during COVID, over four or five developers interested in that parcel, but the parcel wasn't ready enough to bring to the market to have a developer onsite and work with the land. So to continue to move it forward, right now, the town is in the process of transferring 60 Evans Street, which was the old Graham Parcel, to the Batavia Development Corporation. So the city will own 26 Evans, the BDC will own 60 Evans, and the county owns 1 to 3 West Main Street. And we'd like to move forward with an environmental, limited environmental study and incentive planning by Benchmark Turnkey, their professional firm out of Buffalo. In their proposal, you can see some of the timelines of the site, some of the potential contaminants. And all we'd be doing was trying to determine if there are contaminants on the site and whether a developer could use brownfield tax credits or if we have a greenfield and we can move forward with bundling that parcel together and putting it out onto the market. So this is, again, the council had earmarked funding for Creek Park over three years ago and committed fund balance and it stayed for three years. And I'm asking that we use those funds to move forward now with this environmental review and incentive planning.
Any questions on that?
Yeah, are we going to do this before we get ownership of the property?
We would be doing it on the city parcel and we would be doing it in conjunction with the BDC. And we are still working with the county to determine whether they'd like to participate.
About the town portion?
The town is transferring the parcel to the BDC, so we wouldn't do it until the BDC had fully acquired 60 Evans Street.
Okay, and so when they, they would do the study, once they acquire it then?
No.
It's not a Phase 1 environmental site assessment for due diligence. This is a Phase 2 sampling process to determine whether or not the property has impacts that would qualify for the Brownfield's cleanup program.
Okay, so when we do the study, we could at that point, if it's two answers, say we don't want it now or...
Well, the BDC is already going to acquire 60 Evans. So the title is going to be in BDC or the entity created by BDC. The city currently owns a property already, a joint property. So we would have discreet sampling done to determine whether or not the developable areas of the site have certain impacts that would qualify those areas for the BDC.
Gotcha, thank you.
What number Evans is that, metal transportation, next to the ring?
It's a... It's a railroad.
100. What is that?
Were you talking about the transload?
The one on the other side of the track of the...
Other side of the trail.
Trail.
I don't know the parcel number, yeah.
And the railroad?
Is that 100?
I think the numbers get larger as they go towards Maple.
Well, one of them, we were just talking about is the first one after the restaurant that used to be...
It still could be 100, yeah, it's opposite side.
Yeah, so they, I mean, normally they start from the main drag and they get larger as they go down. So I'm thinking 1 and 3 is right near Ellicott Street. And then 26 is on the other side of the fire, what's the fire station address?
18.
So then that's right on the other side of the fire station. And then 60 is even farther out. They're all, these are even numbers, so they're on the right side of the street, I believe. And then 1 and 3 would be by the roundhouse, like in that area, I think. Any other questions on that? There is some interesting reading in here, talks about the history of it. It was mitigated back in the 90s and there's various material in there. So that's definitely something that's going to be looked into and we'll find out what we got going on. So are we in consensus to move that to a future business meeting?
Yes.
Is that a move? The water project, Jackson Street?
Yep, thank you, Council President. The Department of Public Works is preparing to contract for engineering services for the Jackson Street Water Project. And I'll let Brett Frank talk to you about that.
Yeah, so this is a water project to replace about 2,200 feet of outdated, undersized water line down Jackson Street. So moving like 4 inch line to 6 to 8 inch line. We did receive seven RFPs or correspondence from the RFP. It's currently being scored, tabulated, and we'll be choosing an engineering firm in the near future, probably within this week's timeframe.
Are we in consensus to move that to future business?
Yes.
The Healthy Living Campus.
Yes, thank you, Council President. The Healthy Living Campus has...
Just a note, have you noticed the X's on there? That's just because we don't have the bids and everything too, right?
Yeah. No, I'm good, it's just out of order. Yeah, that's okay. So the Healthy Living Campus is working with Genesee County to put in a Restore New York grant. I think I've let council know in the beginning that there might be two projects that we're looking to get funded. One would be going in through the city, one would be going in through the county. The county has asked just that we provide a local support resolution to show that we are in support of a Restore New York grant application for the Healthy Living Campus. Also on your business meeting agenda tonight, this will come forward as will the Cars Resolution. So we'd be hopeful that one or both of these projects would be funded in the first round of Restore New York for their demolition and rehabilitation costs of the projects.
Any questions on that? So are we in consensus to move that to tonight's special business? Is that a move?
Traffic Safety Committee, Karsi.
And the last one, Council President, I'll move to the Fire Chief.
We received what is really a perennial grant from the Governor's Traffic Safety Committee for $4,900. That's going to go towards our Karsi program. Some of the money's going to be allocated towards recertification training for our members and the other portion of it will be for supplies for the program.
Any questions on that?
No. Good.
I have a question, how many Karsis do we still offer people? Can they show up?
It's not, it's not necessarily a car seat getaway. It's more or less an education. So what happens is people call a fire station, like, I don't know if this car seat is installed correctly. They bring it to the fire station. A car seat technician looks at it. They look for recalls. And they educate the party in how to correctly install a seat. Now, that said, we have to have a certain amount of car seats available if the car seat is not serviceable, unsafe. We have to, we can't let them leave without a car seat. It's more of an education. You know, we kind of see one, do one, teach one type thing, just so they know how to do it for the future.
Question. Supposing people have car seats that have been outgrown, but they're still okay? Does anyone take those?
Typically not. There is a shelf life for car seats because of the, a lot of the plastics that break down. So if it's used, organizations are pretty hesitant to take it because they don't know the history of it. Was it involved in a crash?
Oh, that's true. I was just curious, to be honest.
Typically not.
Chief, do you rotate the car seats? Do you have an annual fund towards purchasing car seats so they don't exceed the shelf life?
Yes, yep, in our store. Our car seat technician coordinator does a good job of the rotation of that.
So how much a year do we spend on car seats?
It depends. This year, there's... A little more than half of the money is going to be spent in supplies. It's not just for car seats. It's for office-type supplies. They use pool noodles to make sure that the car seat is elevated the correct way and sits the correct way. So it really varies from year to year, as far as the amount of seats that we purchase.
Anyone else?
Yeah.
So are we in consensus to move that to future business?
Yes.
Yes.
motion to adjourn. Seconded by Mr. Canelli. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Okay, I'll order the business meeting, special business meeting. The septicage is removed.
Correct.
Because that's not, doesn't need to be here, so we're just going to take that out. 83, 2022. The Jackson Square, Mr. McGinnis. 84, 2022, the national grid lights, Mr. Canelli. 85, 2022 is also removed. It's not necessary. That's going to be done by National Grid. So they will take care of that. We don't have to do that. 86, 2022, the municipal grant, the Round Six Restore New York. Which one is this one, Rachel, off the top of my head? Is this the Cars one or the other one?
The first one is...
Because they both kind of say the same thing.
The Cars building.
Okay, the first one is the Cars.
Correct.
Grant, 86, 2022, Mr. Pacino. And 87, 2022, Mr. Byakowski. Okay, let's start with 83, 2022. Mr. McGinnis, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution of the City Council, of City Batavia, authorize the execution of an agreement for architecture and engineering for the downtown revitalization initiative project, Jackson Square.
Seconded by Mr. Briggs. Any questions or concerns?
Rachel, I think you explained this before, but this is going to be a complete redesign of the Jackson Square to downsize it to...
It's going to use the existing design elements to downsize it. So not a complete redesign, but they're going to downgrade some of the over-engineering that was done previously and try to use existing materials that we have so we can come in on budget for construction.
And eliminate the glass roof over the ban stand that's...
That has been eliminated for a while.
Cooking the ban.
I haven't received any complaints on that. They corrected that a year ago, I think.
They did. Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on that? Can you call the roll, please?
Councilmember McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
Resolution 84, 2022. Mr. Canelli, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to authorize acquisition of national grid lights in the city of Batavia through the execution of a purchase-and-sale agreement and attached agreement.
Seconded by Mr. McGinnis. Questions or concerns?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. How many years will it take before we break even on this? Have we finally narrowed it down?
I believe it was 11.3 years. But if you give me a minute, I will look it up.
But didn't you say it was going to be like budget-neutral? It was going to be the same cost of a van for maintenance? Instead, now we're going to pay off the cost of the product, so...
Yep. I'm sorry, the simple payback is 11.56 years. So that is the payback where we are, we've paid off our debt, and we are just simply maintaining our lights as we go. And we're not paying the O&M to National Grid anymore. That's for both phases of the project combined, just to be clear.
Okay, I just want to get that on the record, because I was asked this recently.
Sure. It is budget-neutral because we will not be paying the O&M to National Grid. As Councilmember Jankowski stated, we will be, now be paying that money to support the bond for the purchase of these lights and the upgrade of every light to LED. The actual project.
Which is a good thing.
Yes.
And from what I understand, they're guaranteed for 10 years, so...
Yep, they're under warranty for 10 years.
So for the, you know, 90% of the time of paying it back, we will be covered under warranty for all the, all the why-nots that are up the sun. So any other questions on that? Okay, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Resolution 86, 2022. Mr. Pacino, please.
Thank you, Council President. I move a resolution to submit an application for the Round Six Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program.
Seconded by Mr. Canelli. Any questions or concerns? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Resolution 87, 2022. Mr. Byakowski, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move a resolution to support an application for the Round Six Restore New York Communities Initiative Municipal Grant Program.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Questions or concerns? Call the roll.
Councilmember Byakowski?
Yes.
Jankowski?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Pacino?
Yes.
Canelli?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Briggs?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Richmond?
Yes.
Whereas Article 7, Section 105, 1H of the Public Officers' Law permits the legislative body of municipality to enter into executive session to discuss the proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property, or the proposed acquisition of securities